Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Douglas Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, August 19th at 7:00 PM. Could we please stand for the pledge? All right. Under Chairman's announcements, the only thing I have is the CMIPC Annual Meeting is set for September 11th, Thursday. So it's always a good event for the folks to go who are reps and stuff. Number four, Citizens Forum, is there anybody wishing to talk on anything that's not currently on our agenda? Seeing none, move forward. Number five, we're going to skip over. That's not available. They aren't ready tonight. Number six, Matt, the Land Use Interviews and Discussion?
So we teed this up for you. We're going to ask each of the candidates to make their presentation, answer questions. They will be sequestered during their presentations so as to not hear each other. The purpose of the interview is for you to get a sense of what they're like. You will not be voting tonight. This is not posted for a vote that we had a future Select Board meeting. This is an extremely important and responsible position for the community. And we do this from time to time with all of the people that we have longstanding relationships with. We just keep everybody honest by having some competition to see where we, what suits the needs of the town the greatest. Our staff has interviewed or has experienced with all of these firms and give you a very frank, frankly, frank memo about our impressions from those preliminary interviews. But the decision is ultimately for the Select Board. The power to appoint Land Use Council is exclusively your own. So I wish you the best. I know that Mr. McGregor is online already. I've been looking for Jay and Kate. I don't see them.
Jay is not here. Kate is in the community. Remembering that with her.
Okay. So McGregor is there, so you can go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Well, thank you for coming, Mr. McGregor, joining us tonight.
You're welcome. I'm happy to be here, members of the board, Mr. Administrator, Ms. Freeman, if she is there. Thank you very much for this opportunity. I appreciate, as do the other two firms, I'm sure, meeting the preliminary criteria of your screening committee, which gave us very thorough interviews and which I found very exciting and innovative because you are taking a proactive step in doing what most towns have not, which is to have a dedicated land use council. Now, I know you've had that position and you want to improve it. So I responded enthusiastically to the administrator's obituary and you have in front of you, or had or could have, my very long statement of interest and qualifications, including our 50 prior municipal clients and profiles of what we did for them, everything from soup to nuts, from the obscure to the Supreme Court and everything in between. We had a good session where we talked reality about budget and scope and what you hope to achieve by having a dedicated land use council. We'd like to be the land use council. Of the three firms that you're considering tonight, maybe you're considering more firms, but there are three tonight that made the cut so far for tonight. I am honored, on behalf of McGregor, Legere, Stevens, we are the only specialty land use firm on your list. We also happen to be the oldest land use and environmental law firm in New England. The others have retired, or they merge, or they went into government or the like, and we remain celebrating 50 years of doing land use law and environmental law and all-related litigation. Now, here's my presentation that you haven't heard or read it already. I'll take five minutes of your time. Currently, we handle a full variety of land use matters for cities and towns. Right now, there's about 10. The most recent is Weymouth, starting tonight on an emergency basis. And I explained to your screening committee that no matter what happens in your search for a full-time or pretty much full-time land use council, we would be happy to be considered anytime you need, anything having to do with land use or environmental law. This can be from the sublime to the ridiculous. This can be getting a board back in shape, helping a board have a chair running meetings that get you respect, and by the way, avoid litigation, or rewriting bylaws or regulations for any board in town having to do with land use or environmental, or helping the DPW deal with its salt shed, or your water department dealing with PFAS, or what to do because the Department of Labor and Industries is looking askance at some building you renovated without checking in on lead paint, all the way up to what Weymouth just hired us for a few minutes ago, which is we're going to be special counsel in enforcement against a asphalt plant that's been there a long time under new ownership and they're causing sickness and discomfort in the nearby neighborhood and have two enforcement orders against them about to be heard on August 28th for an adjudicatory hearing. That's a trial-type hearing in the town. And lo and behold, the company sues Weymouth today in federal court, wanting to make a federal case out of it, even though they've exercised their right to have a hearing on the enforcement order to stop the smell. We are jumping in tonight with a fee agreement tendered to the town, our standard municipal fee agreement. That's the kind of thing from sublime to, that's sublime, from the ridiculous to that we'd be happy to work for Douglas anytime, under any arrangement. We work for cities and towns because we like to. We have regular commercial rates. We give a discount of 20% regardless, and that's what we're doing now for the following towns. And then I'll be quiet on this list. These are their current clients. In Apple, a truck crash in bad winter weather took out a town bridge. The company owning the truck says, "Not our fault." That driver is an independent contractor. Our discovery in the court case shows that he's a captured driver. He doesn't work for anybody else. He responds to their requirements to drive their contents in a truck. So therefore, we are dealing with insurance and insurance claim and a suit trying to pin it on the company as responsible. Secondly, for years, we worked for the city of Brockton. We opposed a clean air permit for a power plant burning fossil fuel. And in the end, DEP made decisions that imposed tough conditions and changes in real estate meant the company lost its rights to the permit. That citing dispute is over. We were just hired a couple of weeks ago by the town of Enfield, Connecticut. Turns out, they oppose a recycling transfer station in Massachusetts, along with a citizen group protecting all the ecosystems up and down the streams there. And so we are going to file an appeal under the solid waste laws of Massachusetts because the Board of Health approved in a, what we will allege is a slap-dash three-hour hearing, a project that should have considered all the evidence that was submitted. For Holbrook, there's old site assignments of solid waste facilities that we think expired and we have to opine on whether the old permits expired from the Planning Board and also the Conservation Commission. As you know, those permits expire and we know what the expiration dates are, and we know the three laws passed in Massachusetts extending permits automatically because of COVID, COVID, and the economic situation now. In Howe, we are defending an adverse possession claim by landowners along the ocean who really don't want the town to upgrade the doom, to restore the doom to a natural doom on a public way, out per their cottages. We're defending that in court and we're helping the town resolve the entire thing by taking whatever residual rights these landowners claim by eminent domain at a town meeting coming up. In Marlborough, there is what we believe is a bogus claim under 21E to reimburse somebody for cleanup of their own shooting range, which the police used over many years. And it turns out, in discovery, we find many other people used the shooting range, including the owners. And so there's no way that municipality should be responsible for the complete cleanup cost under 21E. In Sturbridge, there's a long simmering dispute over an old car junkyard claiming to be recycling them, even though they're in wetlands. Cars are in wetlands. So needless to say, there's litigation over that and pending enforcement and hearing in front of the Conservation Commission about a belated, that means an apt-to-the-fact permit applied for under the wetlands laws, to clean it up pretty much, but not completely. And then in Barnstable County, who represent the county in successfully opposing so far for years, the proposal of the Army, which you read about, to use part of the Joint Base Cape Cod, the Part Reserve for Water Supply for the Upper Cape, for a machine gun range. In this respect, we represent the county. Our liaison is the lead county commissioner on the subject. And of course, we participate under MEPA and NEPA and the federal military funding and the National Guard funding and the agreement struck 25 years ago by all the parties not to use that part of the Cape Cod, former Otis Air Force Base, for anything but water supply conservation. Lastly, we just are close to closing, working for Needham for many decades, under 21E on a cleanup, a cleanup of a military contractor solvent problem that went into the groundwater and got into the town school and elsewhere, and that came under 21E, the requirements of DEP, requirements of long-term financial set-asides of money to do the long-term monitoring and cleanup. As you know, under 21E, the state's, it isn't over until it's over.
All right.
So those are the things we're working on right now. Right now, I have five lawyers working on those right now. Thank you very much for listening to that. That's my presentation for now.
Perfect. I just want to open up to the board members if they've got any questions for you.
You were breaking up.
Oh, I just want to open it up to the board members if they've got any questions for you, past experiences and stuff like that. So anybody?
Might tell me anything?
I dealt with Mr. McGregor, I think when he was at Mass DEP, and then when he started his firm, goes back a long time, longer than I probably care to remember. I remember you were very professional and you knew certainly the environmental word. How about other land use aspects besides the environmental zoning, et cetera? You want to touch on any of that?
Yes. Yes. We are asked on behalf of municipalities or others who want to deal with municipalities about zoning of all kinds. Of course, environmental zoning would be flood plain zoning, wetland zoning, water supply zoning, and now climate zoning and energy zoning, especially the restrictions on towns controlling solar energy commercial facilities. So we work on that. And that includes under zoning, grandfather protection now called vesting, and the increased vesting for building on small lots courtesy of the New Housing Act, and the right of everybody in a residential zone district to propose and build an ADU, an accessory dwelling unit. Everybody wants to know about that. And towns need to propose regulations like this town meeting time to host accessory dwelling units, which about half the towns are really excited about doing. The others are looking into it. Now, in the field of subdivision control, under the auspices of the Planning Board, of course, we deal with what's a subdivision and what's an A and R and what's obeying an A and R or old subdivision requirements, and requiring the holder of the original permits to finish the subdivision, finish the utilities, or do whatever the town requires before releasing the pond. That's boilerplate subdivision law. Now, there are environmental requirements and what you'd call land use requirements in subdivision regulations, and many planning boards want to build in requirements that are parallel to the zoning bylaw environmentally or the non-zoning bylaws like the wetlands bylaw or the new energy bylaw. Then we work on water rights. Everybody wants to know who owns the reservoir, who owns the great pond, really, who owns the great pond, who can use the water column, who can use the water surface, what are the rights of the riparian owners to come and go and build docks and the like. So often zoning and real estate and land use combined to help us answer questions of towns about dealing largely with permitting of buildings, cottages, housing, utilities, docks, the like, on and near, regular ponds, great ponds, and other bodies of water. Now, the ones that are state bodies of water are subject to Chapter 91. Chapter 91 is the longest-standing requirement stemming from the colony when the king had an interest in all water that flows and large bodies of water. So Chapter 91, waterways and wetlands, has a huge land use application.
I just want to, Mr. McGregor, I just want to be able to-
Lastly, many towns are asking us that pieces of public land are subject to Article 97.
Boy.
That is, they need a bill in the legislature to transfer it or use it for another purpose
Okay.
after it's been dedicated to a natural resource purpose.
Okay. I just want to make sure-
And all the court cases that are of note on that subject, where the SJC has told us how the law applies to parkland so dedicated to problem-type properties of mixed use, like parkland and water supply, or town forest and school committee-
Mr. McGregor, can I just cut-
And playground, the special law.
Hopefully.
That's my answer to that question for now.
All right. Can I just cut you off because I just want to be able to allow other board members to ask you. We've got other interviews to go through. So with the remaining two minutes, I want to be able to see if there's any other board members that may have a question or two about your experience and their land use experiences and stuff like that.
Sure. We're available for questions anytime.
Hello, Mr. McGregor.
Hi.
I have four questions for you, pretty simple. On the, will you have a dedicated experienced attorney to the town for the land use boards?
Dedicated, I heard you asked.
A dedicated, a dedicated-
To land use boards, yes.
Dedicated experienced attorney.
The CEO, the building inspector, the Board of Health, the Town Forest Committee, the insect pest superintendent, the gypsy moth control officer, and did I say the town forester in regulating work along scenic roads? Add to that the Conservation Commission.
Yeah. So my question is, will we have the same dedicated attorney for these boards or will we be changing constantly?
That's what you want in scope.
Okay.
What the final scope turns out to be. Well, imagine at one end is, you want to be educated. You want all of these listed boards to be educated up to a certain level. That's easy. We just, we have it all in writing. I'm the author of the annual updated environmental law for all municipal boards. I'm the author of a select, a Board of, excuse me, Mass Municipal Association Summary of All Environmental Laws for Local Boards. I'm the editor of the MCLA, that's Continuing Legal Education, Environmental Law Treatise, updated every two years. So we have materials. I don't mean they're canned, but they're authoritative.
Okay.
And we use them to teach our boards. Now, that's if that's what they want. Many towns have hired us for that. Okay. Then there's, they have decisions and they have a run-up to decisions and they want advice on the phone or in writing quickly, quickly, the procedure for run-up to a hearing or a meeting. Or they have a decision they're about to render and they want to know how to do it and want us to review it. So we do. We do it to ensure it's legal, minimizing chance of being overturned. And then finally, almost finally, there's enforcement or enforcement and permitting all mixed together about past violations in which case, since my specialties, enforcement, I was the chief enforcement lawyer for the Commonwealth for five years in the Attorney General's Office on Environment.
Okay.
We helped them with violation notices, site inspection, search and seizure, complying with criminal, civil, and due process laws, and issuing effective enforcement orders.
Mr. McGregor. Mr. McGregor.
My story in Weymouth.
Hopefully.
We defend towns in court. Boards want to be defended in court. It's very critical to have a liaison with the town. So there's crisp, clear communication on what we're going to go for and defend.
That's brutal.
And bring enforcement action.
Mr. McGregor, we're going to move forward because we have a limited timeframe. But I do thank you for attending tonight and providing this background. I think the board members have asked a few questions, which is what we want to cover tonight, but we have two other candidates to get through in 20 minutes we want to allow for each one of them. So I do appreciate you joining tonight and go forward from there. Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry about that, Mike. Sorry about that. Yeah.
Yep.
Well, we've got to put them in the waiting room because we're going to have the other. Can't have the other interviewees in the same room. Okay. Please. I'm like, you know, I'm like, come on. So let's hope it's better. Yeah, there's, there's three chairs there for you.
It's going to fall now. Watch this. Jerry Rickles.
Okay. Thank you for joining us. You're the second interviewee that we're interviewing for the land use discussion. Can you just introduce yourself for the minutaker? So left to right, whichever way?
Sure. I'm happy to start. Peter Mello, Murphy Hesse, Tumi and Lahane, obviously. I'm a partner with the firm. Joined the firm in 2019 and prior to that, had worked for a firm that, a smaller firm that focuses its practice in municipal law. So I've been in the municipal law world for decades now and throughout that period had sort of a special emphasis on land use matters and litigation and had been with the firm since 2019, as I said, and thrilled to have been recently joined by Kate.
Perfect.
To whom I'll turn it over.
Thank you. Kate Connolly. As Peter mentioned, I recently joined Murphy, Hesse, Tumi, and Lahane, but I've been practicing municipal law for 32 years approximately, and he asked me to join his firm recently. We knew each other at Coleman and Page many years ago and represented the town of Douglas in land use matters many years ago. So I've always been in municipal law and land use is my main area of permitting. I've done the private side a little bit as well, but I've always really preferred municipal and I've always had municipal clients in addition to the brief time that I did private stuff for clients like Mass Autobahn and permitting and also the land use litigation. I'm in the land court of law, Superior Court, just had three appeals court arguments that I won that got appealed and once to the SJC, but all with respect to land use.
So I'm Etty Singer and I'm an associate at the firm. I joined the firm about two years ago. I did, I'm a recent graduate. So I did a year of internship and I've been there a year. I assist with research and matters related to municipal law and I've been helping Kate with the land use matters as well.
Good deal. If you could just give us probably in like a couple of minutes, just some of the cases and towns you've worked, you know, have worked on for background and like, you know, give us, you know, examples of different situations. And I just want to probably leave five, five minutes for the board members for questions and stuff like that, if they have any. So some of the communities and stuff like that, cases that you guys have been involved in, gives us background of your involvement and stuff. That'd be great.
Sure. Happy to. And I don't know, Kate, you want to?
I can start with some of the towns locally. I represented Oxford, Sutton, as I mentioned, Douglas a long time ago, Hope Dale, a lot of towns in the area, Uxbridge, I think I said Uxbridge, and really a lot of towns all over the Commonwealth. Currently, we have 10 municipalities. We are special counsel to certain other ones doing land use. For example, I most recently worked for the town of Barnstable. Their Director of Planning and Development left to go to the town of Orleans, another Cape Town, and someone else in our firm, it's, you know, we're small communities. We all kind of work together and you see people leave one town and go to another. The town manager in, I believe it was Menden, moved to Orleans and they together decided to bring us in to do conservation, land use, and contracts and things of that nature. So that's been fun because I worked with this woman for the past five years and now I'm back doing the land use for that town. The biggest land use case that I had, I mean, I've done the gamut. I've done, as I mentioned, zoning enforcement. I do, I represent zoning boards of appeal, planning boards for subdivision, as well as Chapter 40B and any other issues that planning might have. I've represented towns out in Western Mass, probably all the courts in the Commonwealth, although I think, I think I looked recently as far as Superior Courts, there are a couple I haven't been in, but I've tried cases in pretty much all of them. Recently, I had a special permit drive-through window appeal. I've had several of those over the years for different towns, some on the North Shore. One of my best victories was, it was for the town of Dennis, I believe, but it was a special permit drive-through denial. The zoning board of appeals denied it. The plaintiff, which was McDonald's, appealed it and there were a bunch of neighbors who were opposed to the project as well, but they didn't want to join me in, I did a motion for a directed finding, which is at the end of the plaintiff's case, McDonald's put on their case, I represented the zoning board of appeals, and I filed a motion for a directed finding showing that they did not meet their burden of proof and the judge granted it. And it was the first ever in the history of the land court. They did one after that. That was in 1996. And they went back to not granting them again because they want to give everybody a chance to say everything that they want to say. So that was pretty fun. I also had a matter for, I represented a lot of farms and farmers when I was doing private client work, and that gave me a really unique perspective for zoning boards of appeal, special permit granting authorities, because some municipalities, the zoning board is not a special permit granting authority. Some, it's a planning board, and in some, it's the city council or the Board of Selectmen, which will be interesting. And they don't necessarily operate the same way. Every town does it differently. Every town does site plan review differently. So I've sat in on meetings of site plan review and I've done all sorts of defense work for decisions of zoning boards of appeals and other boards that are, that are getting challenged. And that's, again, my favorite, you know, my favorite type of stuff to do. So every different kind of zoning case, every different kind of planning. And conservation's also a really big area of mine, and I'm on the Massachusetts Association of Conservation Commissions, have been on for probably about 20 years, and I've represented municipalities and specifically just conservation commissions that have come into me through that organization. So I've got enough.
Yeah. And similarly, I'm not sure I could get that granular extemporaneously, like do as nice a job as Kate, but I've, over the years, have probably represented dozens of municipalities in all kinds of and varieties of land use litigation. For many years, my previous firm, we represented the town of Framingham. I handled for many years, almost virtually exclusively, all of the litigation that arose from any conservation commission proceedings, special permit appeals under 40A17, variance appeals, zoning enforcement, and have done that really throughout, because I think a lot of zoning disputes aren't susceptible to resolution outside of litigation, unfortunately. A lot of these cases have involved a lot of court time. Parties- Parties, you don't have to be involved in litigation for too long before you're trying to find ways to extricate yourself from the litigation. So a lot of, in a lot of contexts, you're in litigation, and it gets resolved before it gets really substantive, but in land use, that's not always the case. So a lot of, excuse me, the land use cases I've had over the years have been cases that have generated a lot of court experience, a lot of motion practice, you know, discovery, experience with discovery issues. I've also litigated on different sides. We, years ago, handled a case for a group of neighbors challenging a big development project that had sought to avoid certain local permitting through the Dover Amendment. So during that stretch and in the course of that lengthy trial, became pretty familiar with the Dover Amendment and case law around the Dover Amendment. So we've kind of seen it from all angles, and have been involved in litigating, you know, virtually the whole range of legal issues that arise in connection with the land use proceeding.
Okay. Probably just want to open it up to the board members if they've got any questions for the applicant.
You want to be rude to it?
No, you're not being rude. I'll let my superiors talk. Thank you, though, appreciate it.
Go ahead, Mike, I'll let you.
Go ahead. I dealt with your firm many years ago. Mr. Murphy, I think probably not around anymore, but.
He is.
Oh, he is? Okay, all right.
Just had a birthday.
And you were representing some banks at the time, I think it was US Trust, and were doing some tax-exempt financing. So you've got 30 attorneys. What percentage of them are doing environmental or land use or municipal law as opposed to other areas of practice? Is, do you have a rough idea of?
That's a great question. Well, I'll say that almost all of our attorneys touch litigation. We have a lot of folks who represent not only municipalities but other types of governmental entities at the state level, school districts, and so they're very skilled litigators and are readily capable of litigating disputes in different subject matters. But I would say the folks who deal more primarily with land use issues, I'd say probably five to 10, and that's the kind of our core municipal practice group. We have a colleague, Charis North, who's, you know, I think I can appropriately characterize her as a statewide expert on 40B matters. She handles a lot of 40B, not only litigation, but day-to-day assistance in connection with that process. Does a lot of special counsel work for municipalities in that realm or with respect to that issue as well. So I would say we have, I'd say all of our firm's attorneys are very facile and capable litigators, or the majority of them, and have a lot of day-to-day experience with litigation. But I would say probably about 10 who are devoted more specifically to municipal law and are well-acquainted. If you are practicing municipal law regularly, one of the core components of that practice is land use. So I would, I think that we can comfortably say all of our municipal lawyers are really experienced with land use matters.
All right. Go ahead, Mike.
Go ahead, Mike.
I'm up for six questions.
Okay.
Would it be a dedicated experienced attorney consistently for the land use, or would it be changing frequently?
I think, as we said in our proposal, I would take the lead for Douglas for land use.
But you would handle all the meetings for that?
Probably handle everything, and if I had a conflict with something, maybe.
Well, yeah, no pause.
Have somebody else cover it, but yeah, that's the idea.
So are you saying, attend those meetings as determined by the chair, or one a month? Or what do we?
Typically, I'm not asked to attend all the meetings. I definitely go if there's a hearing that's important to the town. I kind of just go on request of the town. Yeah, there's, I have one town right now that's asked me to appear at two meetings per month for the next four months, which is kind of a lot, but I'm happy to do it. And, you know, for zoning enforcement things, certainly for executive session, I must say, for litigation that I've done, I've probably had at least one executive session a week when, you know, cases, when you're trying to figure out what the litigation strategy is, or the case, if you just want it and the other side has said they're going to appeal, I have to go to the board and explain to them what that means, what the next steps are, give them an opportunity to vote and decide what they want to do. And we're, I think all of us go to a lot of meetings every week, but yeah, and I live pretty close to here, so that isn't a big issue for me, but yeah, I'm used to going to lots of meetings of boards, but not just the zoning and planning boards and conservation, but I definitely do a lot of those. And sometimes those boards have open meeting law violation complaints, and we have to go to those to, because the first step is to have the board, if they want to, delegate it to council to draft the response, and sometimes public records requests, for the land use board. So sometimes the land use stuff that we do for those boards isn't really land use, but it's related to the work that they do that we need to help them with.
And I would envision that, you know, in instances where Kate's not available, I would be. This isn't a situation where, in fact, we're not really built in that way, where you'd have the experience of having someone more junior, you know, being the primary attorney with whom you're working or interfacing, that's not really our model. And I think that, I will say anecdotally, we all kind of enjoy land use. I know I do, and it's the type of thing where it's hard to kind of quantify or explain, but if there's an email at 9:37 that night on a Wednesday night about an interesting land use matter, I'm more likely to dive into that at that moment than some mundane municipal finance question, you know, this is just me personally. It's just something I enjoy, and I, we would, I think, be pretty proactive and involved as a team, with Kate being in the kind of the draft seat.
Just to follow up on that question, I asked that question, I'm on the zoning board, I have been since 2013, and we don't request an attorney that often, but if there's a contentious hearing or they're represented by council, typically the chairman will ask for land council to be in attendance to make sure that we're properly represented. But it depends on the case, even if they bring an attorney, it could be a very simple case, and they just pay for an attorney for whatever reason. So that's why I asked that question. The decisions, when we do a decision for, and I'm only concentrating on zoning, we are on that, what's the typical turnaround time for that?
For a draft decision?
Yeah.
Some board, it depends on the board. Some boards draft their own and send them, send it to us to edit.
Land councils and zoning, I don't know if that's going to change, that would be up to the administrator.
You mean the attorney to prepare the decision?
Right, decision.
That's the decision.
Correct.
So looking for that.
Yeah, I'll let Kate jump in. I think it's, in some instances, might be dependent on the circumstances. Obviously, you want to have a detailed decision with findings that cites to the appropriate material in the record.
Oh, yeah, no, I get all that.
Straightforward exercise.
The turnaround time is all I'm asking about.
Yeah, I mean.
Typically, on average, nothing.
Readily, and, you know, as, I guess the short answer from my perspective is, as soon as it needs to be prepared. If there's a circumstance that requires a more prompt process, it would be, it could be within a day, it could be within a week, whatever the circumstance is required.
That's all, just real basic.
No trick question. No trick. He's just.
Yeah, I'm trying to trick you. No, I'm just asking the question, if you told me it's six months, it's six months. I'm just looking for the.
No, it usually.
No, I know that, but if it takes a week to do that, that's fine.
Yeah.
Because I'm thinking about the applicant, fairness to the applicant, they come in, they've gone through this whole process, sometimes it takes two or three months for them to, they get to the point where they finally get a decision, and then if they have to wait 30 to 45 days, they get their decision back and then wait another 20 days for the appeal period, they might retire by the time they did whatever they wanted to.
Right. I've done it probably three different ways. I've had situations where the board sends me the decision, and I didn't go to the hearing. Those I can turn around pretty quickly, provided, I usually will watch the tape, because now that's a benefit that we didn't used to have that we have now, so I can just watch it. If I'm there, I can write it and get it done pretty quickly, within a few days. The third way is, a lot of times, boards have the, maybe because the applicant's attorney wants to draft the decision, they draft the decision, and obviously they're going to.
I'm not a fan.
No, not into that.
Yeah, that's the least favorite, because then, you know, you never know when they're going to.
To be honest with you, as a member of the board, I wouldn't even read it.
Yeah, that's, that's common.
It's not a good precedent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anyway, thank you for that. Meetings should be remote or in person?
Yeah.
Yeah. Availability to the boards and the land use boards for questions or clarity from the chairman, if they have a question at some point?
I'm happy to answer questions. Typically, the municipality has everything go through town administrator, town manager, just to make sure there's sort of a gatekeeper here, and then we'll have a gatekeeper, you know, I'll be the person that looks at it from our end. But that way, we're not having questions come from two different board members, that sort of thing. But yeah, happy to answer questions. I do a lot of zoning opinions.
Good, typically it comes to the chairman, multiple board members calling. 40B and solar, I don't know if you can beam the answer together, what's it got to put in place, it's a weird, I'll run into a nightmare towards the end of the jobs. So any performance, or anything like that that can be done for a 40B or a solar project?
Yeah, I'll just add to it. What Mike's highlighting is definitely the key, is making sure the project can get across the finish line, and so the town doesn't have that burden of the remaining 25% kind of fizzling out, and then the town has the burden of completing a 40B project or any other project, such as a solar, you know, so that's, I think, what he's looking for, and it's important for the community.
I think the key answer is to make sure you have a solid zoning bylaw to start with, and if you've got everything in it that fits the authority that you need, then you can follow each of the steps. I'm going to defer to Peter on the performance bond situation, because he's got some recent experience, but really, I think it does start with a sound bylaw.
Yeah, and when it comes to 40B, this is where I defer to Charis, but I, and I know Etty's had some experience working with Charis on 40B projects, but I think that, you know, kind of more fundamentally, you want to have tight conditions and contractual protections, and that's something that, I don't care what type of decision it is or what context it is, we, you know, we are constantly engaged in that exercise, writing contractual language to protect the client's interests, and, you know, this comes up in the context of, in fact, I just, in recent days, I drafted some language that I proposed for a client to use as kind of a standing condition in definitive subdivision approvals to tighten protections around performance guarantees and enforcing those based on some experiences that the client had had in that regard. And so I think that, you know, you want to maximize your, you know, your ability to enforce, within the bounds of the law, obviously, requirements, not just in the near term, but down the road. So it's, there's not necessarily a one-size-fits-all answer to that, I know, but in the 40B context, it's something that Charis deals with routinely, and I think that's kind of what she does, and that's why she, that's why she gets so much work in that area, because this, you know, she is really well-acquainted with, you know, the forms and the conditions and requirements that municipalities and zoning boards should be looking to impose in 40B projects.
Right. I just got a couple of questions around planning board. Do you, in decisions that you've been a part of, have you guys written anything regarding the right to revisit surety, should, you know, the project goes through and they have a surety amount, and it's been five years, the right to revisit the surety amount, to make sure it's accurate, to catch up to prevailing wages as a project has took longer than expected? Do you put that in any of your decisions, or allowing the towns and municipalities to revisit surety?
I've had some situations where we have put that into the decisions initially, but I haven't seen any that have gotten to the point where they ran into the problems you just described and needed to actually change it. But yeah, I think it makes sense to put provisions like that up front.
And just around, like, surety, what, I guess, what would be your ideal kind of preference around surety with developers, this, different types of surety and stuff like that? I just want to know your thoughts on each one of those, and the pros and cons of each one of those.
I did have a situation, I also represented, well, in the town of Webster, I had a situation where a developer subdivision, residential subdivision defaulted and left, and the bank ended up taking the remaining lots, not the entire thing, because many of the lots had already been sold. I actually was representing a private client at the time, the bank itself, and so I worked very closely with the town. There were actually two towns, there was Grafton and Webster, involved in these two different projects, and the, I think a performance bond would have been the way to go, but they posted, I don't even recall the exact terminology, they basically put, they put money aside and then came back to ask for money back each time, the developer, that is, each time the developer finished something, and ended up, the developer fighting with the bank. It was not pretty. So the developer ended up fighting with the bank to get more of the money back, and finally the developer just took off, and nobody even knows where he or she went. But the town ended up finishing the project with the bank, and it was just, it was sticky. I think if they had had a performance bond rather than some of the other methods, I think they used like multiple methods of surety, and it just made it really difficult to get a court to even understand what it was that they were asking for back.
So do you know how long ago that was? About bark?
I'm trying to think what year that was, was probably nine or 10 years ago.
Probably, it was just the plant important at that time.
No.
In Webster.
Oh, okay.
So, oh, that's great. Any other questions for the members?
Sure, why not? Curious as to what your gatekeeper form looks like, and really, what investigation does the employee do prior to even having the thought of getting the professional opinion from you guys?
The employee in the town?
No, it says the gatekeeper form?
Yeah.
The form would require an employee to investigate other resources, including state agencies, to resolve a legal issue, and then to obtain the permission from the town administrator to contact council.
I don't, and maybe defer to Peter because he's been with the firm longer, but I don't think we see that. I think that's something internal, where you want to have the assurance that your employees either called a state agency or did one of those things before going to town council, and then when you're happy with that, then you can send it to us.
So that would be an internal, excuse me, internal exercise the employee does here, presents that to Matt, and at that point, Matt, you digest that and see if it escalates up?
I think we could. We're happy to assist with creating a form that lays out a process. I think that that's also an exercise that might be more prevalent in the context of a general council arrangement, where, you know, when you're representing a town as town council, and you're dealing with all different, you know, the whole gamut, you know, all town departments and officials and boards and public bodies, the need for that might be more prevalent. If you're, if the service is more targeted, as I understand it would be in this case, you know, you might not need to, you know, to go through that sort of effort, but the way I have always kind of approached this is taking cues from the main town officials with whom you're working, and you just want to make sure that there's an understanding and a system in place so that, you know, costs don't get out of the envelope. That's really what it's about, and you want to, you want to, it's also kind of organic, it's hard to define, but you, you, just a relationship forms, and, you know, if the gatekeeper, so to speak, is comfortable with the chair of the board X, Y, or Z calling you on your cell phone directly, and that's worked, and it hasn't been abused, and the arrangements worked well, I think that can be fine, you know. So it's. It's all different.
Just, just for my board to understand, we have a pretty extensive vetting process internally when we have an issue and dispute. So we typically have an internal conversation, we do some of the background research and I've never practiced, but I went to law school, so what I learned is, everything I learned at law school is wrong. So whatever my gut reaction is, council will come back and tell me 180-degree different conclusion. So it's become a nice tool of thumb to have. I'm joking a little bit. What we try to do is refine the question as a question presented in the old-fashioned law review format, right? What is it that we need to answer? And getting a department head or an enforcement agent to flesh out exactly what the issue is really makes the interaction with council much more efficient. So that's, that's kind of how we work here. Our emphasis is making sure NOVs and decisions can survive appeal, that they're fully backed with facts and that council has a chance to review it and say, I can't win on this record, you've got to find more stuff. That's, I think is 90% of preventing litigation is just doing really good solid practices.
Exactly. That's one of the main topics that I do trainings on for, whether it's MACC or my own municipal land use boards, I do one on writing sound decisions with like the key things that you, and enforcement, the key things you need to put in your enforcement letter so it's not coming back to you. And if you end up in court, you can get a contempt finding and just the board's decisions, if they get challenged, they're going to win, but most of the time, they're not going to get challenged if they put in all the components that they put in.
Yeah, and sometimes it's, it's very simple, it's kind of at its core, it's, you know, reciting findings and tying the findings to some fact that's been presented, some item in the record that supports that proposition. It's just, it's a really simple exercise, but it's often overlooked.
Okay, well, I think I'm good. Questions? We're all, all good over here?
I appreciate you coming out.
Yeah, appreciate you coming out, taking your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Nope.
We'll do.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Kathy, where do you live?
Sorry, who is?
Kathleen, where do you live?
Oh.
Thank you.
No, that picture didn't say.
Nope.
Nope.
Yeah, we have volunteers.
Nope.
Okay.
Evening, everyone.
Hello.
Hey, how are you?
Good. Well, thank you for joining us. Jay, just for the record, just introduce yourself with a minute taker and then, you know, if you can just give us an overview on some of the things, you know, your firm's working on with other municipalities and experiences and then, you know, for like, you know, five, five minutes or so and then we just want to probably get any Q and A's and stuff like that.
Sure.
Do appreciate you coming out.
Glad to be here. So Jay Tallerman, me, Tallerman and Costa, we currently represent the town as its land use council and we've been everything from town council to land use council and we've served in this current capacity probably for over, about 15 years, 15 to 20 years. And before that, I was at a partner at KP Law, then Copelman and Page, and I did a lot of work for Douglas then, so my history goes back pretty far for the town. We're a municipal law firm. We do primarily town council work, but we also do a lot of special council work and land use work. We represent as town council 42 towns. We have 22 attorneys in three different offices, including some of the attorneys you see pretty frequently from our Milis office, which is a growing office. We were formed around 2004 and started to do town council work around 2006 and we kind of built that around a slightly different model, which you currently enjoy here in Douglas, and that is to be kind of part of a team and to develop fee arrangements and other mechanisms to make sure that when you call us, we can give you response. When you need us at a meeting, we can be there without fear of the billable hour strangling your legal services. So if it's March and you've already burnt through a whole bunch of your legal services and you don't want to pick up the phone, that's not us. We charge a flat fee and have for years. Now, we, there's a few exclusions and Matt has on occasion used us for some excluded services, but otherwise, on the land use side, we've never gone over budget and we've always been there for meetings and that includes litigation. Sometimes when litigation gets heavy, it's not exactly great for our effective hourly rate, but it's been really effective in, in allowing us to get you where you need to be without fear of one trial or one large proceeding or one proceeding that lasts, I don't know, for 10, 15 years to cripple your legal budget. And we do that so that you can feel comfortable that you can call us when you need us, when your staff can call us when you need us and get, whether it's a mundane question about an open meeting law issue, or it's a significant question about enforcement, or a question that none of us have ever seen before in terms of complex legal research. And we, we do that on all the permitting. We'll sometimes go a little bit beyond land use council and provide advice that touches a little bit because we're just here for you. I mean, that's been our approach for it. I've enjoyed it over the years. I've worked with a number of you, I've worked with Matt for a long time, with Mike certainly on a couple of different boards. It's been great and, you know, we've had a couple bumps in the road here and there, but by and large, we're really proud of the work we've done for Douglas over the years and our approach remains the same. We're just constantly improving it as we can and getting new and better attorneys to help support the town.
Okay. Any questions? No? You're good. Do you want to go?
Go ahead.
All right. I just got a couple. It'd be, I think since you've been part of the town, you know, working with the town, you know, is there areas that you see where we could probably tighten things up to better protect the towns, you know, risk on kind of 40B development where, you know, the town could inherit some burden or even on a subdivision project? Is there any, you know, thoughts in that where you think, you know, going forward, hey, this is where we probably need to make some adjustments to better?
Well, I think it's a matter from our perspective, from the legal services, we can certainly help on planning in and around 40B and to the extent that the town had a stomach for, we could start seeking out our own opportunities so we could control our own destiny in and around 40B by using town-owned properties or making public-private partnerships in a way that we can control the narrative because we're constantly adding to that affordable housing inventory, thereby not having to deal with necessarily someone coming in in an area where we don't want them to be. You know, we make efforts to do that, nothing's perfect. Many, many years ago, when, when, you know, the 40B project, the North Brown project was conceived, everyone was on board, we had a good concise agreement, some of that we inherited, but some of that we worked on and it was going well. Nothing will protect you 100% from things that go sideways, but there are things we can do to, to implement that makes those services stronger. And that cuts across other kinds of permitting as well. We, again, with the flat fee services, we do a decent amount of work with the zoning board of appeals. We do less work with the planning board and the conservation commission here. We are pleased to be, from a legal services standpoint, in on the ground floor. When someone, when you hear about a project coming in to start early, to attend those meetings, to, to work them through so that we're reaching a result that is immune from appeal, but also gets the town what it needs to do, sometimes we do get that advance notice and we're able to be part of that project team, you know, in and around some of the larger industrial scale development that we did where we're on the ground floor. But, you know, the flat fee is great for that because it's almost unlimited access. There are some practical parameters, but we can be more present to help these boards, to help your, your planning staff, and I know there's been some turnover there, but to help them get smart on things. Your newer planner we work with, I answered month, simple question, I answered complex questions. So.
Is there any thought in, you know, drafting decisions about the revisit saying, okay, when surety's put forward and stuff like that, what we found in the past where a project has taken 10 years to complete and by the time it gets there where the surety's put aside in year one and now we're in year 10 and that surety amount doesn't add up to what, what the list of finishes would be, you know, the right for board to go before developer gets too kind of long in the process, did the right to revisit surety and make adjustments to the new prevailing wage?
Surety is a difficult one. The one thing that we've done recently on surety that we're trying to get our towns to implement is to put an additional clause in financial security provisions, whether it's a bond or tribe party agreement or a passbook that has a five-year kind of look back and every five years, we evaluate and get a new estimate to see if we need to increase that amount. There's some legal challenges to that, but we've been largely successful. We've done that a lot with solar decommissioning agreements, but there's no reason why we can't implement that. It's relatively new concept, but it's, we're trying to implement that even in subdivision security to make sure that we have that kind of look back provision. No security is perfect. The way the statutes work, sometimes we get left holding the bag and regardless of the amount of money that's in these security, the thought that we would control development in an otherwise private project and have to be developers ourselves of infrastructure is not where we want to be. That said, it's a necessary element of development and we're constantly working with those forms and I, in fact, I drafted a subdivision bond today for another town that had that five-year recalculation provision. So we're constantly trying to evolve with the times.
So my other thing is, I've had the pleasure of going before ZBA boards in multiple communities, including this one, prior to being on the board or being a slacker and stuff. What I've found, what do you think the turnaround time should be when a board makes a decision that night, when the decision should be written up? What should be the average?
Well, I think it depends on a few factors. One, the kind of application. So for the zoning board in particular, if it's a special permit, their deadline is 90 days after they close a hearing. I don't think it's required that they take all 90 days and very often they're, they can get it done in way less than 90 days. For a complex project, they may need more time because they may have to deliberate a little bit. For variances and zoning appeals, it's 100 and 100 days plus 14 additional days to file a decision after the hearing starts. So that's on a tighter schedule and we can, we adhere to that. We can work as quickly as a board needs us to work if we get the information and the board says, we want to pick this up at our next hearing, then there's no reason why we can't help with that drafting of a decision. Sometimes boards also get really busy and they might be juggling five or six things at a time, so it might be difficult for them on a special permit case to be able to turn around things that quickly. So the statute, especially with special permits, gives them a long period of time. I think sometimes, and we are in the, you know, in the municipal sphere, we're in the customer service business, sometimes it's good to not avail ourselves of all of those 90 days, especially if we're working on a project that has a beneficial impact. Sometimes it's so complex that we need a little bit more than just, say, 14 days. So we're, we try and be responsive to the needs when they, when we get asked to do, draft an opinion to get right on it, we will ask about deadlines, when the next hearing is. Sometimes we have to review multiple hearing videos, it take, might take a little bit longer, but we, we think that there's always room for economy and customer service in that regard and we're committed to that responsiveness.
I'm just highlighting, and I just want to share this with you, is I don't think I've ever waited more than 10 days after decisions have been made from a board to have it in hand outside of this community. And I've seen applicants outside this community wait, wait tremendous amount of time. It's just, it's just something where I think, again, to your, what you highlighted is maybe working with the chairs and saying, oh, we might be ready for a decision tonight so it can get done in a time.
We also offer training and I don't think it's been years since the town has used us, although we have in the past done some training, whether it's on the basis of open meeting law stuff or just wetlands basics, zoning basics. So we, we offer that, there's no extra cost for that. So it might be time for, if there's been significant turnover in any of the boards, there's been some continuity, but even then, we always stand ready to do some training so that people can get to things more expediently.
Okay. All right. I think that's, any questions?
Jay, we've been doing this for a while.
Yeah.
So I think it's fair to tee this up for you and hopefully you hit a home run with it, but given your knowledge of Douglas, the way that we operate, you know, what, what are the strengths with that or is, you know, land use is pretty cut and dry, you just got to get in there. Is there a particular strength that this relationship yields at this particular moment in time?
Well, I, I'll tell you, it's remarkable to me to see the evolution in any community, but when you see like kind of the growth of this area in particular and Douglas growing along with it, would I have ever thought in a million years that we would have spearheaded large industrial style development and turned it into a positive? That probably wasn't on the radar screen when I first started. I know that Hal, back in the day, had a bunch of interesting and-
Close call.
Yeah. Great, great ideas, but, you know, these, these things take a lot of time to implement, but I think Douglas has, has grown a lot with the times. We've kind of grown with it. I think that we represent a lot of bigger and more urban communities and we've also represent more rural communities that want to have an emphasis on slow growth. I think you're somewhere in the, in between, given the demographics that are changing in this particular area of the state. We do a lot of land development agreements, land disposition agreements, we constantly push the envelope. Before I got here, I was on a conference call with the town of Chatham for about an hour on their affordable housing initiatives, which we took from ground zero to then putting out RFPs on municipal property so that they can control their 40B destiny for decades. And that was the kind of initiative and that's the kind of stuff that we do all the time. You know, we, we're always careful to kind of move at the pace of the policy setters in town and there's good policy folks here and you have your own vision. We want to work with that vision. If your vision is going to evolve with what you see going forward with the town or what the planning board sees going with the town, we're prepared and we have the tools to grow with it. You know, we take our cues from you. I, I can always offer the benefit of my experience with housing stuff or with wetland stuff or with new bylaws that you're developing, but I'm going to, I, we need to take those cues from you. We never want to step on what you want to accomplish as a community, so we're really, we're really sensitive to that. But we have the tools and we have the bandwidth and we have the necessary contract people, conservation people, land development people, real estate people to let you get your vision across. So, and we're happy to be participants in that. And again, you have a framework here with our fee network to use us more than you're using us now. I mean, it sounds counterintuitive because it cuts against my effective hourly rate, but this is what we do and this is why we like our practice, is we could be more here as you start to develop ideas about where you want to go as a community. And I know that, again, you know, Hal's had a lot of great ideas over the years on adopting statutes. We could see a lot of that stuff through.
Bert?
Thank you, Jay.
Any other questions for the board? I think, no, all, all is good. All right. Well, Jay, I want to thank you for coming, as always.
Thank you.
Pleasure.
Yeah.
Appreciate your time.
Happy to be here.
We'll move forward.
Before you go to the next agenda item, does anybody in the room care if I turn off that rule of lights?
Oh, flickering light? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I can actually control the lights.
That's okay. All right. Yeah, make a run now while Matt's hitting the light switch. Glad all three folks were able to come in for the interviews, so. There we go.
Pretty exciting stuff, huh?
Dimming the lights. There we go. Any other questions for the board? I think all's good. All right. Well, Jay, I want to thank you for coming. As always, pleasure. Appreciate your time.
Happy to be here.
We'll move forward.
Before you go to the next agenda item, does anybody in the room care if I turn off that rule of lights?
Oh, flickering light? Yeah, yeah.
I can actually control the lights.
That's okay. All right. Yeah. Make a run now while Matt's hitting the light. Switch. Glad all three folks were able to come in for the interviews, so.
Pretty exciting stuff, huh?
Dimming the lights. There we go. All right, on to number seven, building security discussion with the pickleball and basketball groups. And possible votes.
Good evening.
Could you just introduce yourself for the minute taker? I know some of us know you, and...
Donnie here from the pickleball group.
I'm Ryan Hogan, former president of Douglas Youth Basketball and chairman of the Recreation Commission. I brought along Jason Towne. He's the new president of Douglas Youth Basketball. So I brought him along and introduced him to everybody.
Good deal.
Hello. Jason Towne, you head of Douglas Youth Basketball.
Got some shoes to fill.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's great that you're stepping forward. It's sometimes struggle to get the right person at the right time, and if Ryan's here to vouch for you, I'm sure the basketball program will produce a number one pick in the NBA draft.
Hopefully my son.
Yeah, well, welcome.
So tee this up, Matt.
As best I can. I think what, for those of us in the building are looking just to have an open conversation about the management of our security in this building. And in a way, it is, not in a way, it is truly, I don't want to say thrilling, but very satisfying to see the community utilize the municipal center. It's an asset. The more the asset is utilized, the more value it has to the town. And so the fact that the gym is busy, and the building is busy, is an excellent thing. And the fact that so many people are being able to recreate and get some value out of it just cements this building's position in the community as a place to invest. We also struggle, though, with building security. Because it's an old-school building, and we try not to be Fort Knox. We're not locked down. We still do need to be sensitive to the fact that we have quite a few sensitive records, both in hard copy and then our IT network that's here. And just over time, propping doors open, kids coming in during the middle of the day, that I don't even know what their connection is to Douglas Recreation, whether it's basketball or other sports. I just don't know. Some of them, I think, have graduated high school and are taking advantage of the fact that they can get in during the day, through town hall, open the door, and help themselves to the gym. And they may not have all of the insurance paperwork filled out. And, you know, we've had some, some people wander to parts of the building that are not really good places to be hanging out. So that's just really, we wanted to go on record, try to work with you guys to figure out what is the system that's going to work the best. It's one thing to give out keys. It's another thing to collect them. And I'm not a basketball guy, I'm a baseball guy, but trying to get keys back to field boxes at the end of a baseball season was just, it was easier to change the locks than it was to chase 10 coaches down to get the keys. And I think we're just looking for a way to make sure we have protocols in place so that the end of each athletic season, we're able to tighten up the security again and get back to a place where we're not worried about people running around. The kids really do need to understand this is a place of business during the day. So coming up and down the halls and making a ruckus, most of the time, nobody cares. But there are those few times when, you know, constituent comes in, talking about issues that are important to them, and it's just, you know, the environment doesn't, we don't set the right tone if we're set up like a, like a school. So that's really why we wanted to have this conversation tonight. Pickleball is a model citizen. It's kind of like, you know, what is the human capacity of the space? Because it's extremely popular program and fills it out. From our perspective, you guys are all getting along great, and it seems like you're sharing the facility. I want to thank Ryan for his leadership on being able to cement that in the beginning. And we had our rough spots, right? It's, gym floors are expensive. It's one, it's really okay to be concerned about those expenses, but any thoughts you have on what way of controlling access to the gym? Put it out there. But don't worry, we'll worry about the money on the capital side. What will work for you in terms of whether it's cards that we can activate and deactivate, extending our card reader system down there, because we have one for the other two doors? Just what's your thoughts?
Well, for starters, we have a very limited number of keys with staff, with people that have access to it. And I know everybody that has the key. It's not supposed to be passed on to anybody that's not authorized to have it. We kind of stick with that as much as we can. Somebody may have to leave for an emergency, like me, a couple of times, and somebody else will close. But generally, it's always someone that's been authorized to have a key that will be running the program. Always told to lock the gym on your way out, and make sure the doors are locked as well. We don't prop the doors open, but we do keep them unlocked while we have the program going on. But other than that, I don't see an issue as far as us controlling ingress and egress points and security.
So from basketball's point of view, I thought we'd made a big step forward with this. About a year ago, we started locking the actual gym door, not just the outdoor into the gym complex, but the gym door itself. At that point, I thought that took away a lot of the kids coming through the town hall and getting into the gym that way, because we can't lock the door going from town hall out to the gym. I was a little surprised about this. I thought that had taken care of most of the problems. I had not heard anything about that.
So the workaround, so that does work. The workaround is to, and this is a special skill that teenagers have, to close the door almost all the way so it's not quite locked. So all of those doors to the outside.
Yeah.
So the main doors are locked.
Yeah.
And now we've got access in, and they're not getting away with it anymore because we installed cameras. Now we can come up.
Right. So that's always been the issue, propping the doors, right? Especially, that way they could get out, get around the outside lock back in the day when there weren't two locks, right? So during the basketball season, it is emphasized, when you're in the gym, go through all the side doors, make sure they're locked up. Now, we haven't really been in there at all in the summer. We had one team practicing once a week in the spring, so we haven't been in there very much at all. So again, I want to come through you, like, if they want to have their own pickup practice, six or eight people, and they, they know you, so that coach will vouch for them if they come in here. Is that happening very much? What's the process? Not kids, right? Now, coaches, coaches have kids, right? Coaches have keys, and to be bluntly honest, we don't collect them at the end of the year and pass them back out, because our turnover is very limited, right? So most of those coaches are going to just get a key for last year. Now, when we, I believe it was 18 months ago, we changed all the keys. We changed the locks, I believe, right around that point, right? So at that point, any old coaches who still had keys, they're not even good anymore. So I would say we have maybe eight to 10 keys out there. Now, are there coaches coming down with their sons and shooting hoops on a Sunday morning? Quite possibly, and there's no way to know. You know...
Anything with an adult supervisor, we just don't worry about.
Right. I don't, you know, how the kids get in there, you know, like I said, they used to come in through the town hall, walk into the gym, you know. But now that that indoor gym door is locked, I thought that had kind of alleviated the situation. Maybe it hasn't, I don't know. As well as future solutions, I mean, a card reader would clearly be an easier solution, right? We looked into the cost of that from the basketball program at one point. It really wasn't all that feasible. You really had to do it through the whole building as opposed to just over there. Can we put that card reader we have out there, or a separate entrance to the outdoor gym? Taking, you know, just clicking a switch or making a request to Lisa to take away somebody's access is a lot easier, as you said, than trying to get, trying to get a key. And you could even do it, you know, off-season, you could take, if you really wanted to, right at the end of the season, you could cut off everyone's access and then reestablish in the fall when the basketball season starts. So that'd be a couple of my thoughts. The other thing I would note is, the door, when you come from the gym into the town hall, that blue door there, used to be much more consistently locked than it's been. I know we've had some work done in here, and sometimes it's left open for contractors, but it used to be pretty, that you, you got into the gym, you could not get into town hall. It's not so much. Last Thursday, I came in for something. I just happened to go in on a check. I walked, walked in, but the door closed behind me, opened it, came right back in. So, you know, from town's perspective, I would say if we could be a little, I don't know whose responsibility that is, but a little more consistency locking that door, I think would help in keeping some of the people out of town.
I was trying not to throw anybody under the bus there, Ryan.
Sorry.
We find that door open quite often, that door that leads from the town hall into that area.
Yeah, so do I. So part of what we're trying to figure out is how this is going to happen.
And that's on Sunday night when we come in, we find it.
No, they've been coming in a lot with the projects going on out front. Steve's been coming in a lot, so that may be why.
Yeah, we've had some, we've had to turn the water on and off to accommodate this demoralizing project.
The other thing I'll say with a card reader, if you guys, if, you know, the funds are there, you have a log of who's, who's actually accessed it. So if something happens, you know who came in at that point in time. It's not a bad idea.
So just for the select was reference, I don't know that this current system can be extended, because I think it's obsolete. So we have to upgrade all of our initiatives, but it might be worth it, and it'll come to capital as a properly formed project when it's right. But just kind of hoping to have some support for that concept rather than just throwing it out there on their own. But it's one way to keep the community able to use its spaces without changing the way the security.
Seems like one of the biggest problems is the propping open of the emergency door on the outside. So maybe we can look into either alarming them or...
It just becomes the checklist before you leave the space. There's not very many doors down there for, starting from the back of the school.
I can certainly emphasize that to all the coaches this year to check every door before they wrap up practice and leave. I think that's, we could also consider collecting keys if we think that's a good idea. But there is only a small handful of coaches, so I've got, I got two of the teams, so.
I will say, I understand your concern from the kids getting into town hall and getting, but in terms of actual damage done in the, there's been very little damage done in the 10-year, or actually 15-years I've been done program. We had one hoop come down because a young man was dunking on it, but I think that was more the stability of the hoop, hoop. It's been there for 35 years or so than the kid doing it, but...
If you can dunk, take it out.
The worst that seems to happen is basketball's left out, trash left out, that sort of thing. But the community, from my perspective, has been, you know, it's been great that, we want to keep the building as secure as we can, but there certainly hasn't been any damage to the gym.
I've tried to install the themes because there really is never any trash issue. People clean up spills. I mean, there really is phenomenal work with here, people taking, taking access. So I don't want to leave it.
Yeah, that's perfect. But yeah, just in closing, yeah, the partnership's been great with the Douglas Youth Basketball, using the gym and utilizing it and updating it and keeping it fresh. So it's been a win-win, I think, from the community's perspective, so.
Don't give them all the credit.
No, and I do enjoy seeing pickleball on the...
No, for the gym as well.
I, you know, I do. I know, when the season turns, but...
We deserve some of that credit. It is proof that there can be peace on earth.
Correct. Yeah. If, you know, pickleball people can get along with basketball people and separate the hours and everything like that, works out great. So, all right, I appreciate, yeah, appreciate you coming from there. I think, Ryan, you got the next item on the agenda too, right?
I do.
Okay. Appreciate you guys' time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So as we move forward, donation acceptance for the Rec Commission, possible votes.
So as I, as I am outgoing president and moving on to different things, I wanted to find a way to emphasize how important the Municipal Center Gym is to our program. The ability to not have to use the schools, pay for janitors, not fight over schedules, the ability to keep our own equipment back there for convenience sakes is just such a huge program, instead of passing something out to every coach, just sticking it in there. And so I just wanted a way to share that with the town. There are some things going on in there that are, some costs that are going to come up here in the near future. While the use of the gym is fantastic for pickleballers, and I'm thrilled that people besides the youth community are able to use it, the bleachers have taken a real beating, because in the winter, we used to just open them on October 1st and close them on March 1st. And now they're open and closed multiple times a week. And they're maybe older than I am, so they are taking a lot of beating. So that's a cost that's going to be coming up down the road. So, and our ability to be in there has allowed us to offer basketball at the cheapest registration price in the area, bar none. So just to, so the program is able to continue that, the basketball program wanted to make a donation to the town. We've set up a donation fund, the Recreation Commission. This particular donation will be able to use for any repairs in the municipal center, any large purchases that need to be made, anything like that. So, that's about it.
It's a big number, Ryan, at $35,000. When you first became president of the program some 10-plus years ago, do you know how much you inherited?
Around 15. So it's, we're in a little bit different state than we were. Most of that revenue was generated when we ran the Douglas Tournament in February. So we had that rolling pretty well. Last year, we had almost 60 teams play here February School Vacation Week. We made $12,000. Since COVID, we had, COVID kind of put an end to the start of that, and then some of the people who really helped with that are no longer with us and didn't make it feasible to do it. I mean, while it was great that week, it was a ton of work, and you just need people to do it. So I do know the new board is interested in maybe starting that again and help create more revenue for the program. Currently, the program, I would say, the last four or five years has pretty much been, you know, at an even basis, costs to revenue. So we've left them a fair, a fair amount of funds to be able to handle anything that comes up. But like I said, I think that Municipal Center Gym, the ability to use that and keep that up to date is key for the program's success in the future.
Just a question. Over your tenure, I know you've contributed a lot of the donations and stuff like that. What's, I guess, I'm just curious what the tally is over the, over your tenure.
I'm sorry, I don't exactly...
You've donated money back into the gym and into the Rec Commission to revitalize.
Yeah. So the program, the Rec Commission itself has not spent much on the gym since I've been on there. We're fortunate in our sense, we're a little more fortunate revenue-wise. Again, we get to use the gym and other things. You know, I would say the basketball program itself, over the 15 years, I put $20,000 into the gym. I mean, cleaning supplies, we put new baskets up at one point. Floor's been refinished and painted numerous times. So it's a lot, you know, it's a lot of money, a lot of time. We repainted the walls once. I want to bring that up, you know. So, yeah, I would say somewhere around $20,000 since I've been involved. So that's including five years before I was president. You know, I hope we can keep that, keep that going. It's a, it's an old-style gym. It's, when the place is packed and there's a big game going on there, it's nothing like it. As much as I like our high school gym, it's just so much more big and open. The sound doesn't reverberate. And so I've been there through, you know, a few times when that's happened, and that, you know, it's a very special place.
It's like the Boston Garden of Douglas.
Yes, it's very similar to that, where the sound vibrates and...
You have to take the doors off the toilet, so.
Yeah, no, that's very true. Place bumps. So with that, I would make a motion that this board, on behalf of the town, accept the donation and gift of $35,000 to support any new equipment for the gym or maintenance and repairs of the gym, and/or to support recreational activities in the Municipal Center Gym. These funds would be earmarked for recreation approval.
Second.
All right. Motion by Tim, second by Hal, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. 5-0. Appreciate it, Ryan.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is to accept, donation acceptance for the gazebo located at Town Common. Possible votes.
There's no one here else to speak to it quick.
Sure.
People have been waiting a long time. $4,250 for repair of one of the posts at the gazebo, and contracts being administered through my office. And the 501(c)(3) is donating the money to cover the cost.
Okay, perfect. All right.
Move approval.
Second.
All right. Motion by Hal, second by Tim. All in favor?
Aye.
5-0. Move forward. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the right to farm bylaw, citizen petition, and agricultural committee, citizen petition and discussion. I think there's a few people in the audience, but I would just, I want to maybe weigh in on this. Maybe the author or two wish to come up and just give us some background on the citizen petition for our board members.
Good evening.
Just your name and address for the record.
Lori Colbert, 11 Crescent Lane.
Okay.
Dallas Keeney, 13 U Street.
Dallas Keeney, 13 U Street.
All right. So to give us some background on what sparked the interest in farming, the Right to Farm Bylaw.
First, I wanted to just thank you guys for inviting us to come and, you know, introduce the petition and answer any questions about it. Before I get into a little bit of the background, I wanted to just clarify a little confusion that may have arisen. Last night, there was a Board of Health meeting that we weren't at because it wasn't on the posted agenda. Apparently, they didn't foresee discussing it. But there was a little bit of discussion about Right to Farm. Just wanted to clarify that the draft that the Animal Regulation Subcommittee forwarded to the Board of Health to consider, that draft is based on the Paxton existing Right to Farm Bylaw, which is similar but not the same as the Right to Farm Bylaw that's in our petition. So what they were looking at was not our draft. So just to clarify, I know Corey Howard mentioned he had some concerns that we had left out ruminants, goats and sheep, and those are specifically listed in our documents. So I just wanted to clarify that. So, back to your question. So, you know, it's been interesting. Most of the people that we've talked to about this in town have actually really been shocked to find that we are not already a Right to Farm town. Most people think that we are because we have been operating that way for 279 years as a town. We're a farming town through and through and always have been. So, you know, we feel like it's time to formalize that. There's a map we had come across that shows in Massachusetts where the ag-coms and the Right to Farm towns are. All the ones that are in color have ag-com or Right to Farm or both. And so you can see that, you know, where we are, everywhere west of us has it. Several towns southeast of us and several northeast of us have it. And it's really clear that, you know, the towns that don't, it's Boston and Metro West. So we're, you know, we're really in that spot where we're kind of on that border between those two regions. And it's come to be time for us to pass it. As of May 2017, there were 172 ag-com established in Massachusetts and 140 Right to Farm towns. So it is common. It's not anything new that we're suggesting. It's really just taking what we've been doing as a town all this time and putting it in writing and formalizing and protecting our Right to Farm here. We recognize that Douglas is growing in population and there is building going on and there's more business development being done. And this won't stop that, but it would ensure that that growth is done on the foundation of who we are already as a community and protecting and preserving that.
So I guess I got a few questions. Is it, on the farming rights, was this started because some folks that had five-plus acres were, and have farms operating today, were, raised this issue?
You know, really, we're coming to it because of movements that have been made by the Board of Health. They have said that they are struggling with having complaints, and they acknowledge that it's only a handful of complaints every year. But they are struggling with what to tell people when they call and say, hey, my neighbor has a rooster or horses or whatever, and I don't like it. There's not any regulation prohibiting that. And so the Board of Health has said that they want something on the books that they can point to and say, this is what is allowed. Their approach has been more of a restrictive nature to make a list of, here's the things that you can do and you can't do. And we're not fans of that approach. If they want something to point to to say, here's what you can do in Douglas, we think that our Right to Farm is much more in line with our identity as a town. Douglas is a very freedom-loving place, and our Right to Farm is much more in line with what we've already been doing for a long time in Douglas.
How long have you lived in Douglas?
I've been here about 20 years. I've been coming here since I was a kid.
Okay. Just for the background, and that's fine. And so this is the alternate path, I guess, versus working in kind of, you know, coexisting with the, you know, regulations with Board of Health or figuring out like where you both can kind of come together versus?
We spent months trying to meet with the Board of Health. And the Subcommittee was formed, but things were still trending in a direction that most people were very uncomfortable with. We have spoken to well over 400 people on this. This has not been something we just did for fun. This was because the people were asking us to step up and help with this. So our goal is to protect everyone equally as much as possible. Because the Board of Health did have the issues with, you know, complaints of any nature, some that are real and some that aren't, that is why we also have a petition for the formation of the ag-com. We want the ag-com to be an educational body first and foremost to help people. In that way, that if there is a true issue, the ag-com could be that first stepping stone to helping mitigate it before jumping straight to complaining to the Board of Health.
Yeah, I'm just, I find sometimes that they take a while to come through, like a goodbye law, vetting period and stuff like that. Sometimes, you know, we, and I think probably approached some, stormwater's probably taken us three to five years to get a reasonable stormwater bylaw through. We were successful in that, and that was needed to meet an EPA order. So I think, you know, just reading through, was it, did this bylaw come from another community that's kind of vetted out? Or was this just written up by both of you?
This has come from the state model law.
Model law.
But there is precedent in other towns for protecting hobby and non-commercial farms as well. So we did build that in.
Okay. Okay. Any questions for the members?
Yeah, just to.
Because Hal's a farm person.
Yeah, I guess so.
Yeah? Horses and everything?
Petition to create the Agricultural Commission and the Board of Health, it seems a little bit hazy as to which, the Board of Health over this Agricultural Commission has powers, which has powers to do what? Is it pretty straightforward? Maybe I'm missing that. But I see you wanted to create an Agricultural Commission, and then there's the Board of Health is involved as well.
The Board of Health would ideally be involved if there was a true health concern. So if there was trash everywhere, animals loose, disease, massive amounts of runoff, things that would constitute them actually needing to step in, or ultimately trying to take the burden off of them on nuisance issues and be the ones who would be able to go in and help people. We do have built in to the RTF, I believe, about, instead of just neighbors calling and anonymously complaining, that we would ask, they would try to talk with their neighbors first. Because a lot of what the Board of Health deals with is anonymous complaints, and people won't even find out that there's been an issue for tons and months down the road.
Additionally, you know, you were talking about regulation. Part of the other function of the ag-com would be that that would be the body that would form any additional regulation in the future. And that going through the ag-com rather than the Board of Health is very helpful because the ag-com would be made up of people who are actively engaged in farming and familiar with generally accepted farming practice. So they would have the knowledge to do that job well.
Okay. So on Section 5, I read through this, and one of the concerns that kind of sparked my interest is, you know, notification to buyers. Any person selling or transferring real estate property in the town of Douglas shall include the sale, in the sales agreement, the transfer document and the disclosure. So when you get into disclosure agreements, there's acknowledgement of disclosure, there's filings for that, and there's recordings of those. But it doesn't highlight exactly what the mechanism is in here. So I can say, if it's a notice doc disclosure from a buyer to a seller, $125 per side. If it's recorded up at the registry deeds as an acknowledgement document, then you're looking at, you know, about $150 per that. So there's an additional expense that's going to be burdened here. So that's one thing, just on the disclosure end of it, in the reporting to buyers and stuff like that. So that is just one piece I kind of looked, discovered and stuff. Doesn't cover, one of the things is, you know, pre-existing farms that are in here, you know, in Section 4, it's about, you know, nuisance claims and stuff, you know, and whether it's above or below five acres indebted and stuff. Could you highlight anything on Section 4 that you've written in there that, about nuisance claims and stuff like that? Was that just from the state carried forward?
That is from the state law. The only thing that's different there from the model is adding in the protection for people who own less than five indebted acres. The disclosure is also from the state model. So those are all, some amendment needed to be made at town meeting to clarify those further. That's all.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, I'm just worried about, because of the people complaining about cost of housing and stuff like that, this could be another $500 fee for the acknowledgement and stuff like that, or transfer for buyers. Also, the communities surrounding that us that might not have this in, you know, that, it's one thing to probably consider and stuff like that, are the ones that have adopted or haven't adopted because, you know, if there's a overlay such as a policy like this, it may impact people. And that's why, you know, people would prefer another town versus over another town. So just things to consider and stuff. I know you guys have put this forward and just give you some background on that. That's all.
So, you know, to that point, it's been interesting in our conversations with people who've come to sign. There was a gentleman who was here who I believe earlier that had, you know, come in to sign the petition and spoke to us about, it took them years to find a property that they wanted to buy because they were looking for someplace that was commutable to Boston where they could have horses. And they looked for years before they found it. And they were thrilled when they found a property in Douglas because they could do that. They said, this doesn't exist in the same way in other towns. It's one of the things that makes Douglas a desirable place to live. I'm not a big fan of the, we have to do what all the other towns are doing. I think Douglas is a very special place, and I'm not afraid for it to be different in the wonderful ways that it is.
Okay. And I think some of the things that I read through here was just the focus on, I think, town services, that it would increase town services and the oversight of the town and stuff like that. What thoughts have you put forward on that?
Could you clarify, please?
So in here, it highlights, or it was in the commission thing, but there's the management. So if you're doing acknowledgement, is that going to be tracked at the town level, whether there's knowledge from one buyer to the other buyer? Is that kept there? So when bylaws come forward, there's always like a oversight of managing. So is this going to involve like town services?
Ideally, the management ideally would become the ag-com.
Ag-com, okay.
There will be an inspector component to this that would have to work in unison with Board of Health?
As there already is. That one's correct. It would need to be more, the animal inspector would then be working with the ag-com instead of the Board of Health, less it would affect the safety issue.
Would it be the Board of Health that's going to come out with the more particulars as to how many sheep you can have per acre or this sort of detail? Because that's not in here. So how does that get rid, or is it open season as long as you're in, meet the rural agricultural, you can have as many animals as you want? Or what's the limitation on that?
So if there was an additional regulation that was more specific, that would be established in the ag-com at this point, if these bylaws were passed.
Would it be the Board of Health?
No, it would be the ag-com that would forward any additional regulation. So.
Get some people.
It's very difficult once you, it's one of the reasons that the Subcommittee kind of struggled some over the past few months, is it's very difficult. It seems fairly straightforward at first blush to look at, okay, well, maybe you, you know, do so many animals on this size land. But when you start talking to farmers and about what animals need, it varies greatly, even within the same type of animal. You know, a horse that's in hospice needs much less space than a horse that needs to run every day. So it's very difficult to quantify that. So those kinds of, that's one of the reasons for those kinds of restrictive regulations that enumerate how many of this kind of animal or how many of this kind of animal. Very difficult to actually draft about. So it really goes more towards, we're not having significant issues with that. And there are already animal welfare regulations at the state level that ensure that animals are being well-kept, well-heared for. So we don't need to add anything more restrictive than that as a town.
So that's a good leadway. So, scratch my libertarian itch. Why do we need this?
We need it to protect us from the character of Douglas being changed as time goes on. There is more, the Right to Farm came about as a national push, that all 50 states have some form of Right to Farm books on their state-level laws, as a response to the urbanization that is occurring, pushing farms out, you know, city centers growing and suburbs growing. And we're feeling that crunch here. So that's why we need it and why we need it now.
So this ship's sailing, and I commend you for leveraging the levers of town governance. I think if, in some respects, we had maybe a further dialogue with this body, you know, maybe we would have worked a little collaboratively towards this. But having said that, this is the process, and I'm sure you're going to put a good foot forward in town meeting. And thank you for being here.
Yeah, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for y'all.
No, it's in a public area. Sorry.
Just the office. All right. Okay, let's move forward. Item number 11, Conservation and Board of Health Fee Schedule and Discussion. Possible votes.
Just give him a second.
Yep. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you for your time. All right. Moving along. Number 11. Matt, this is just for discussion and possible votes. I know we have to do the annual thing of reviewing appointed boards, fee schedules from time to time. Is there, and what we need to do on this front? Or are we good for another year?
I thought there was going to be more discussion driven by the board. As far as we're concerned, on the town administration side, we need to publish to the board the fee schedule and collect the feedback from the conservation agent and the Board of Health on what their neighboring communities do and whether or not we're meeting the costs of our programs. So I'd keep it on your agenda.
Yep.
But as for this evening, we don't have much for you. I've gotten anecdotal feedback from the conservation agent that we are low. I think one of the first things he did when he was brought on here was to increase the fee schedule, and he still feels that we're low. Frankly, if we're going to pay for this level of expertise, it really should be self-funding through the applicant process and not at the taxpayer's expense for those specific things. So we can get a more detailed report prepared for you.
Is that the case now?
What's that?
Do we front-end any of the COMCOM work?
We pay above and beyond any 53G account for things that are not specifically tied to an application requiring that expertise. So if we're going to do an ANRAD or a spot inspection, there are costs. So if we're going to do an ANRAD or a spot inspection, there are costs that are passed on to us for travel and time. If there's not, if the project's not big enough to have its own 53G, it's, we're paying for it. Now, the concom does have its own fund that it builds up every year from fees. This is the first fiscal year, pardon me, that we have not scooped about 10 grand from that account. We left alone. Our balance was small.
Yep.
So we're kind of at the end of this rope. And what my feeling is, is we're just not collecting enough to support the function.
Yep.
All of our regulatory functions are allowed to raise what they need to sustain their activities without subsidy from the operating budget. We should, I'm going to try to move that direction.
Makes sense, yeah. We can keep it on for another future meeting, just in case.
So these proposed fees are staff-driven or after a survey of results? Or just a 20% markup?
No, since our concom agent works for the communities, that's the benchmark, where we stand, especially with those that are closest to us. Now, we want to be in alignment because really, it's all the same work.
Mike, any question?
Transfer station, Board of Health discussion. Who's oversight does that, is that the Board of Health or do we have involved? I'm agreeing with you. What I'm asking that for is, I think we should be looking towards trying to get creative to prevent any rate increases down the road. Disposal prices are drastically going up. Private sector for disposal, just a 150 shock. Dump service not too long ago. When I was at the, I went to the Board of Health meeting last week and they dissolved that subcommittee in the event that we had a forum here. This phase on this one. There was a minded discussion about getting a compactor for the cardboard and things like that. Just observations going by there on that road. It almost seems like there's some use of that that is, for lack of a better description, commercial. Systems being abused, it doesn't affect me personally, I'm not concerned about it, people that are fixed income, senior citizens and stuff that are going to be impacted. I did ask, because I seen this on there, so I checked with the financial director to ask where we were with that enterprise fund. Last year's ticket sales sold 356,000. Total expenditures for the year were 326, which gives you about a nine cent cushion, just under nine cents. But they also have other revenues that come in from other sources that are calculated. But there's not that much of a buffer. That's got to fill up pretty quickly if there was some thought put into how we can get rid and fix that problem. That's all, honestly, that's all, Board of Health, how that works.
So this is one of your unique characteristics, Mr. Chairman, as a community. You have an appointed Board of Health that manages an enterprise fund. The board is appointed by you. You are the chief policymaking board of the town, and you should appoint people to boards that forward your policies. There's a consensus amongst the five of you, or three to two majority, you should be able to work your well through the people that you appoint as their terms expire. Right now, I think you have two vacancies and you have three members. And there are any number of policy initiatives that have been put forth in other towns that are extremely effective. There's always a way around every regulation. Everybody knows this, right? So pay-as-you-throw, people try to cheat, but for the most part, it does one thing. It shifts the burden to people who use the resource the most and away from seniors. So no matter how much of a break you give people, it may still be too much for that permit and not reflect the small bag of trash that they take. They may be able to sit on their trash for three to four weeks before they dispose of it. So in my experience in another community, pay-as-you-throw was a huge winner. The people who used it the most paid the most. People who didn't use it at all paid very little. And that community had a combination. You could go to the transfer station, or you could do curbside pickup. Either way, your stuff had to be in bags. And one of the things it did is because bags cost you money, but recycling did not, it pushed people towards sorting out the waste stream. I don't think that works unless you have single stream. So being able to put all of your recyclables into one bin rather than sitting there and sorting it all out. But if you can put it all in one bin, you're going to save a lot of money by not using your pay-as-you-throw bags. That's a policy you could have a conversation about. We could probably be more efficient in the way that we manage our recyclables. The key thing is this. This is a policy dispute that has existed for a long time in this field, and it aggravates the living Jesus on me. We are not in the recycling business to make money. Stop it. We are in the recycling business to save landfill space, which is money.
Yep.
So I don't care if we collect a billion tons of cardboard and don't make any money on it or even pay to have it hauled away. It's being recycled. It's not going into that precious space. And, you know, cardboard, and one actually rots pretty fast and doesn't use up all much space, but there are other things we throw away that just sit there forever. But the industry hasn't done itself any favors. We all know that glass gets crushed and used for cover material. It's not actually being recycled by anyone. We've got to bust through all these myths and get to what really matters, which is keeping stuff out of the landfill and making sure that the service is cost-effective for people. You know, we started having a conversation with some of the staff in Board of Health about curbside pickup. And our hauling contract has gotten so expensive from the transfer station that it is actually not a silly conversation to go to curbside pickup. My only recommendation for leaders in any town is, once you start it, you can never take it away or change it in any way. Because if you want to have a riot in the streets, mess with the way people throw their trash away. Guaranteed. And, you know, that initial contract discussion with our current hauler might have been loaded up with some incentives to sign up. And then they're exempt from the procurement statute, so now we have only one bidder that we deal with for solid waste disposal, and the costs just go up. So we have to be savvy about how we approach this. It's not a forever sustainable model. Like, the enterprise fund has taken enough, it's a business. It is, so water, wastewater, and health through the transfer station are businesses. They have taken enough money to cover their costs and their long-term capital improvements.
Yep.
So that's what goes into the price of stickers. And all that stuff's getting so much more expensive, that's what's driving this tension back. So at the end of the day, one of the single most important things is make sure all your commercial waste goes to a commercial disposal facility and doesn't end up in your residential stream.
It might be worthwhile, as Mike highlighted, maybe looking at, you know, if the Board of Health is on their radar to look at a compactor for the cardboard, you know, and an outlay of what they think, you know, the cost could be in the future and stuff like that, where we can kind of try to see what we can do to, again.
I don't know if they'll gain a lot with a compactor.
Yeah.
Because if they only have one compactor, now it's full, right? Right now, they have three, and I only learned this last night, three dumpsters that they use for the cardboard. And actually, the residents of the town are extremely efficient about breaking up their cardboard.
Yeah, the different bins.
You're not going to, you're not going to crush it much more than what it is.
That's true. And they do the glass separation, the bottles and stuff like that, so.
I think the biggest, I think the biggest problem we have is the abuse of the landfill on the transfer station, to be honest with you. And that's just from pure observation.
I call it piggybacking or sticker type of thing.
Yep, yep.
Three or four people are using one sticker, and it's just, it drives the cost up, basically, like Matt stands. The cost of haul in a way isn't going down.
It's a negative self-reinforcing cycle. Not enough people buy stickers, so then, but the same amount of waste keeps coming in, so the price of haulage goes up, so the price of stickers keeps going up, pushing more people to try to cheat the system and piggyback. So you have to break that cycle in order to make the whole thing more cost-effective for everybody involved.
All right. I don't want to beat the dead horse, but, you know, if anything else, we can move forward.
So what if you reduced it and made it more attainable, and it forced a little bit more?
I think you just converted to pay-as-you-throw.
The queue line could be, the queuing line could be tough, like going up there, how many bags you got.
But that is the fundamental concept.
Well, the pay-as-you-throw, they don't count the bags. What you would do is, Town of Plainville does it. You buy a bag that has a Plainville sticker on the标签. So it's, it's pretty simple.
You can do it either way, but buying the pre-stamped bags is the most intelligent way to do it. In Westport, you can, we take our stuff to the transfer station, they count the number of bags. I could jam, at the time, more diapers than you ever thought a family could produce into one bag and pay for one bag. And I just polluted half the, you know, country with it. It's better to just charge people for the bags and then go different, at least two different sizes, so that what you're trying to carve out especially are folks that are older in years and just don't generate the waste stream that a young family does. So they get, they buy a $1.50 bag and they use one every two weeks. And a big family like mine buys $2.50 bags.
Buys those 50 packs.
50 packs, and we use 10 bags a week.
Yep.
Right? So we pay more for those.
All right.
It's just something that I think is going to be on the radar, just to look at, because it's not going to be long before it ends up coming back again.
Yep. All right. Number 12, private property offer, purchase of town land.
We can move through this one quickly, Mr. Chairman. There's town land abutting an existing operating business on Davis Street. The business has inquired whether or not they would be able to convince the select board to put the property up for sale through the typical Chapter 30B, Section 16 process. They understand it would be a competitive bidding process. They understand they would have to bid, be the winning bid to get it. So I thought you would, might want to entertain this concept because it has to do with the growth of what has panned out to be a successful business in town. In a part of town where there is commerce.
Disposal of town property, does that have to go to the town meeting or no?
Absolutely. So there are steps, so I'll go through the steps super fast.
He said 30B, that's why I asked him.
Yeah, super fast. The select board would have to pass a finding that the land is no longer needed for municipal purposes. At that point, it goes on to the town meeting warrant for authorization to sell. Only if town meeting voted yes, would you be able to come back here, delegate the responsibility to me to come up with the RFP and put it out there. And I think in this particular case, we probably have to survey and redraw a lot line to comply with what it is.
My question would be to, is if we could break it down instead of the one big piece that's.
Yeah, no.
Wouldn't be that whole big piece.
No.
I'm just saying, that way you lose potential advantage for.
At that point, we'd all be wearing hemp to work. Yeah. Sorry.
Is there anything you're looking for tonight? Or are you thinking next meeting to give us a sketch or thoughts?
We would need to define.
Yeah, we always, we always put possible votes on it. Doesn't mean that we're expecting you to vote on it. Just broaching the topic for you to consider. I mean, this is capital cannabis. They have any number of events where they need additional parking space. Right now, a lot of that parking is getting pushed onto the street. There's been a breakdown of relationships with others that in the past were part of the planning board approval for site plan review, and now they just need a place to put all those cars. If that's going to keep happening, the public safety recommendation would be to get those cars off Davis Street. Davis isn't very wide for people to pass, to be honest.
All right. I think, do you need anything from us to kind of take the next step from there?
No, I mean, I think we, what we'll do is we'll have the community development director and others who have the software in town hall to do it, draw a putative line on a map.
Perfect.
And you'll have something to look for. But again, that would require subdivision, you know, in A and R.
Yep.
Only if it was approved.
Perfect. All right, as we move forward, number 13, meeting minutes, possible votes. We only have one set of meeting minutes, which is the June 3rd.
This is the one that we already went through, so there's just a question of whether or not, under number five, the wording of that.
Yep.
And it's been, it's pretty much the same as what it was. If everybody else is fine with it, I would make a motion to approve the meeting minute of June 3rd, 2025.
Second. Okay, motion by Mike, second of the Tim, all in favor?
Hi.
All right, 5-0. Number 14, town administrators report.
We've had a long meeting here tonight, so I think I'll do my best to not delve into all the details. We'll talk about plenty in executive session. I just am trying to follow up on questions that Selectman Davis asked regarding right to farm. Municipal Agricultural Commission list of authority and powers are in Chapter 40, Section 8L. L is lovely. And the Board of Health's authority come out of Chapter 111, Section 26. I haven't read 8L in every last possible detail. Sitting here talking to you guys, I've read it over two or three times. I don't see where a municipal ag commission is actually authorized by state statute to promulgate regulations. I believe the way this was drafted was that if the Board of Health was going to promulgate regulations under its existing authority in 11126, that it would first go to the ag commission for comment and review. So to the extent that this petition includes the authority to promulgate regulations by the ag commission, I'm not sure we would have to look into whether that is something that could be done or not done with the Attorney General to stand on that aspect of the bylaw. I know that this has been an extremely controversial issue in my hometown, and the Board of Health has been promulgating regulations, notwithstanding the ag commission's feedback on specific aspects of it. Now, they went to town meeting and got slaughtered on a bylaw, but they still had the power to issue regulations under state law, and that was, it couldn't be challenged in the end. So there's, that's a really important question, like who's going to drive the bus on what these things look like. The town of Mendon, and I'll inquire with them, they have a specific regulation for the management of roosters. And the question, where did that come from? So I'll find out for you, was that the ag commission, the ag, any ag commission anywhere can put out a draft regulation. It's whether they have the authority to actually make it binding on people. My guess is in Mendon, that may have come from the ag commission, gone to their local Board of Health for actual promulgation as a regulation. It's not the worst idea in the world either, if you've ever had these animal chickens in your yard. So as far as the rest of it, I think we'll go over a lot in executive session. That's why I think we'll just wrap it up right now.
All right. Any topics not reasonably anticipated 40 hours, 48 hours in part of the meeting? Roundtable, anything?
Well, maybe rewind to Citizens Forum, just use the opportunity, as I see Sarah working diligently over in the corner, but to thank the Library Commission, the library folk, historic folks for really a nice community event down at Soldiers Field a couple of weeks ago. We had a good turnout. The weather was beautiful, and it was fun to be a part of, so good job all.
All right.
Very professionally done.
Very professionally done.
I heard the attendance was very well and everything went off pretty smooth, so the weather was good.
Yeah, we're talking about it. The attendance was about the same as a Baybrook championship game, right? For the silly game at the beginning, which was kind of neat to see in the parking lot. Oh, and the emergency management folk were instrumental in making certain that parking worked out well. But it was happened in place. Good to see life down there.
All right. We can move forward. Ross, you're up.
All right, I'll make a motion to move to executive session, potential litigation for MSHP Shaw Road and the WCD, and also interest in rental property at 16 and 18 Paridel Road, and to reconvene into open session for sole purpose of adjournment.
Second.
All right, motion by Ross, seconded by Hal, recall vote?
David's aye.
Steven's aye.
Aye.
It's Patrick aye.